Good evening. It is five o'clock and we are calling the special meeting in order. This is a special meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this meeting is a work session to discuss the strategic plan status update. I'd like to thank everybody who's joining us in person and those who are also able to view very, also through our live stream. First, we'll start with a roll call of our board members. When you are, your names called, please indicate your presence by saying present. Director Gregory.
Present.
Director Song is absent. Director Clark.
Present.
Vice President Cook is absent and unexcused, and I am present. And our first order of business, I'll call on Superintendent Bella.
Thank you, President Margel, members of the board. I want to start off this, to this evening by thanking, first, our board for championing and partnering on the implementation of our strategic plan. And tonight is a, as part of a quarterly reporting, as you know, we've had throughout the year, we come to you and report on our progress and update. That's what tonight is about. And I also want to thank our team who has been working, not just this year, but really since the beginning of the creation of the strategic plan, which was a huge undertaking and required community, required voices in the Kent School District to get to where we are today. I'm just so proud of, of what our work, the work that our teams have done together, along with Board Superintendent Governance Team. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Spencer Pan, our Senior Executive Director of Strategic Initiatives and Operations, to begin the presentation this evening. Mr. Pan?
Yeah, thank you Superintendent, and we're just grateful for the support of our board and our superintendent as we continue to align the work around our strategic initiatives and iterate that every year. As our superintendent just outlined, this is a quarterly occurrence. We are in the third sequence of these updates for this cycle. And one of the things you should expect tonight is, as we've done throughout and iterated from what you've provided some feedback, we've gotten a lot more explicit about what we anticipated to have, have accomplished by this point in time. So you'll see both that, you know, what did we set out at the onset of the year for these initiatives, and did we successfully meet those? For many of them, you'll see that we have met those, those kind of end of year or near end of year accomplishments that we set out to do. For others, you'll see that we are getting close, but the work will, doesn't always match up exactly on like, you know, this endpoint in May or June, right? So some work will persist in the summer. We'll outline how we're going to update the board and our rest of our public with the progress that occurs over the summer and into the next year. One other important component to remember is that these things are a little fluid as well. We have a set of priority initiatives. They evolve over time, and we're always looking at how they help move us towards those measurements that we have, right? Our strategic plan KPIs. So we'll talk a little bit about that. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Sarah, our Director of Accountability and Strategy, to really launch off and our next portion.
Spencer, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Good evening, members of the board, President Margel, members of our board, Superintendent Bella, and Ms. Curry. We are honored today to bring you the 2425 Strategic Plan Spring Update, wrapping up this year, the 2425 school year, and really year two of our five-year strategic plan. We really wanted to align the update, the year-two launch in October, connecting you all with the mid-year update in January, and really then providing you a wrap-up of how we have concluded the 2425 school year, really into the spring and summer months. We also wanted to acknowledge that just last Friday, we provided you, the board, with a comprehensive look of our priority initiatives, including key milestones and timelines. I'm sitting next to myself is Allison Liao, our project specialist. As we've done in the fall and the winter, she's going to continue to dive deeper into each of our priority initiatives. We also have with us today Dr. Rebecca Kim, Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. She is going to present on the integration of high-quality instructional leadership embedded in all of our initiatives under Goal One. As I've done in the past, I will quickly do a major status update for the board, and we request that all questions be held until the end. So this slide has been a reoccurring element in our board updates this year. It's a communication tool to provide key major priority initiative status changes. In yellow are the priority initiatives that we are excited to tell you that are continuing great work for our district into the spring and summer months. The two initiatives in green, we are excited to tell you that we will have updates today as they work tirelessly to wrap up their priority initiatives this year, and yeah, and we're really excited about that, truthfully. So one other highlight for under Goal Three, if there's time available and interest by the board, we do have some additional information around our, one of our priority initiatives, school supplies availability. So with that, I would love to pass this over to Allison Liao to continue in-depth analysis of each priority initiative.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. All right, before we dive into the updates, you'll notice the slides are more condensed compared to the previous presentations. This is intentional to keep today's conversation a little more streamlined. As usual, I'll highlight the current and upcoming summer work and allow you to read through the completed items asynchronously. After we review the updates on Goal, the Goal One slide, I'll hand it over to Dr. Kim, who will speak in more depth about Goal One and how the leadership initiative supports and connects to all of the priority efforts under this goal. So, for the first update, leadership, we're using insights from the learning walks and survey data to design targeted strategies that support and scale student-centered instructional practices. This summer, we will embed these strategies into a sustainable long-term learning plan to ensure continued impact across schools. K-12 literacy, we're wrapping up the two-year early implementation phase with impact assessment currently underway. Over the summer, the team will coordinate project closeout and begin planning for future scaling and transitions. Mathematics, we're finalizing the documentation from the landscape analysis and developing professional development recommendations. This summer, we'll launch the professional development focused on building thinking classrooms to enhance math instruction. MTSS update, an implementation team is being assembled to guide a coherent district-wide rollout for MTSS practices. The summer efforts will focus on developing a robust professional development plan and beginning policy work to ensure long-term sustainability. STEM partner, sorry, STEM City of Kent Partnerships, we're actually, we're actively planning on rolling out Project Lead the Way in elementary schools and preparing for the launch of the Core Plus Aerospace and Construction Career Pathways. This summer, we'll begin implementation of Project Lead the Way and Core Plus Aerospace, and host a summer construction camp to expand student access to STEM careers. Dr. Kim?
Yes.
Ms. Cook.
And I want to thank our Executive Director Carol Cleveland for that last update on the STEM City of Kent Partnership. All right, well, I am thrilled to share the year-long journey that we have been on. It's actually a year-plus journey of partnership and learning from the Center for Educational Leadership. They happen to live in our backyard at University of Washington and are a national organization. It is the framework for our instructional framework for teachers, and so there is relevancy to this partnership. So last spring, this visual was shared with all of our school and teaching and learning leaders. And this was showing what the journey around improving high-quality instruction would be and what our efforts would be across the school year. So we engaged over 110 leaders of school principals, assistant principals, and teaching and learning administrators to engage in this year-long journey. And what that encompassed was a measurement of where we are in our instructional leadership, individual measurements, to build that relevancy and urgency of why we want to focus in on high-quality instruction. So with that, we had an August kickoff with Instructional Leadership Institutes, where we engaged in shared learning. And then, there's a lot of sit-and-get that you can get, but then what are you actually doing with it? And so that applied learning and practice took place with 28 implementation learning walks in cohorts of 15, and I'll give you a little bit more information about that. Before I go into detail there, I just want to share what that theory of action is of Center for Educational Leadership. Why are we engaged in this, and how does this impact high-quality instruction across all classrooms in KSD? So their theory of action says that students' social, emotional, and academic learning will not improve until the quality of teaching improves, and the quality of teaching will not improve until leaders understand what constitutes high-quality instruction and learning environments, along with the role leaders play in improving instructional practice, learning environments, and student learning. So this focus is on the instructional leaders, who are school leaders and teaching and learning leaders. But I just want you to pay attention to serving the whole child. It's in the first lines, and that is our MTSS work. It talks about their learning environments, which is also part of our goals. It talks about high-quality instruction that is centered around Goal Four. So yes, this may be Goal One, but it encompasses all of our goals, and so I just want to articulate that. So the Instructional Leadership Academies, we will hold our last one next Monday, has about an average of 108 participants that are coming together for this shared learning. We spend the day with the focus in on the shared learning, deepening school leaders' skills around observation, analysis, and collaborative conversations, giving informal feedback. Not just the couple times of year that you're going to go in to do a classroom observation and evaluation, but really diving in and giving teachers qualitative feedback. I saw you do this. As a result, students were engaging in their math instruction. That's an example of informal feedback. And then this ongoing inquiry stance, it's not judgmental, it's taking this inquiry stance of, I saw this, what does this imply around the professional development that I want to engage in with my staff? So, shared learning and the feedback of those sessions combined has been consistently positive. Our leaders are saying that they strongly agree, or agree in the nineties, around the learning session helping them to be more student-centered when they're in classrooms, that these learning sessions will help them to create more equitable learning outcomes. The shared learning of these institutes also have strong feedback, that there will, that this will have greater impact in their job. And then last, that they felt like it was effective adult learning experiences. And that's really important that, as we're looking at the pedagogy in classrooms, we're also demonstrating and modeling that same pedagogy. So the key learning, they were able to do some open text response, and so we just threw it into an opportunity to put it into a Wordle. And you'll see that the key learning that these leaders are saying that they're getting from these institutes are how to increase the way that they give targeted feedbacks, that it cycles. It's not just a one-and-done, one-way feedback type of an observation. That there is learning happening, that they are reflecting, that they're getting bite-sized learning, and it's not just something all at once like a big waterfall. So you have in front of you the slides. You also have that combined feedback, so I won't spend a lot of time here. But you'll just see that consistency of the nineties in strongly agreeing and agreeing around their learning experience. The next part are the implementation learning walks. So we learned about this, we learned about giving informal feedback. We learned about using that feedback and using the patterns and trends to guide the professional learning design. And so we want people to be able to practice it. So thank you to six of our executive leaders of Teaching and Learning as executive sponsors that worked alongside members from the Center for Educational Leadership to lead full-day sessions of implementation learning walks in cohorts of 15. That cohort of 15 leaders stayed together throughout the school year. They built relationships that they did not have opportunities to before. They started to build cohesive visions and were building cohesion amongst each other in ways they haven't. I want to celebrate that in the couple that I was able to observe and be in. I was hearing assistant principals talk about instruction and sharing their strengths in ways that I haven't had the opportunity before. I was seeing and hearing from teaching and learning assistant directors how excited they have been to be in schools and to be part of this learning. And so that's just some qualitative data in addition, that the learning and the collaboration and the relationships that have been built have been helpful. So here's just another soundbite of some feedback that we received. In one of the questions, every time we engage in these learnings, we do surveys. One of the prompts was, in what specific ways do you intend to change or refine your practice to create more equitable learning outcomes? So I just wanted to highlight a couple, that they're talking to students about their experiences. Sometimes students will come and they will talk to that cohort of 15 and say, here's what that learning meant to me. So we're bringing student voice, AKA street data, into the learning. That they are engaging in more conversations with students and intentional walks. That they're being intentional about when they go in classrooms and what they're looking for. And I love that someone had a quick turnkey and said, I'm going to use those STEM questions I saw being used in the classroom. So leaders are able to be in classrooms and, and get these ideas and able to turnkey these. So with 108, 110-ish leaders engaging in shared learning, practicing it in implementation learning walks, it is making a dent in the culture of high-quality instruction. That by investing and spending this time with shared learning and practice and sponsorship and collaboration with teaching and learning, that we are calibrated around what we mean by high-quality student equity-centered instruction. And that's really exciting and something for us to be proud of. So when you see, when you hear about ILA, Instructional Leadership Academy, or these learning walks, as you're, as you're hearing more about that, we wanted to just share a little bit more about what that really meant and the impact that it's had and the data that you see in front of you. Now, we will not partner forever. These partnerships are meant to be a gradual release and to grow our own. So our principal supervisors and executive team members from Teaching and Learning are currently in the progress of developing a plan for how to sustain this work next year. What will this look like for elementary leader gatherings? What will this look like when principal supervisors engage with their leaders? So there is a sustainability plan in progress. And then also thought about when new administrators enter into KSD, what will it look like to onboard them? And we understand that University of Washington will be partnering with Cell, even though they're of the same organization, to invite new administrators to get that onboarding. So that if you come new into KSD in a year or two, and people are talking about this really cool thing we did, that they don't have fear of missing out, and that they too will be able to participate. So yes, it's great that we've invested in it, but it's most important that we're sustaining those efforts.
And with that, I will pass it on back to Allison for Goal Two.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kim. That was all very exciting. So here we have moved on to, nope, Goal Two. So student leadership opportunities. We were actively engaging with student leaders, building the student resource hub, and working to formalize the student voice policy and advisory structures. This initiative will pause over the summer due to limited student availability and resume in the fall. The Evaluate Mental Health Partnerships Initiative, we're currently evaluating Hazel Health to assist, to assess, sorry, service impact accessibility and alignment with student needs. Over the summer, the team will synthesize the findings to inform future decisions about partnership development and service delivery. Switching to Goal Three, Core Supply Coordination. Work is underway to secure funding, finalize vendor purchase, sorry, partnerships, place supply orders, and coordinate logistics. This summer, we'll manage deliveries, organize school-level distribution, and prepare communication for staff and families. And this is what Sarah also had brought some samples of if people want to look at it. Also, we have sports and ASB activity participation. The team is preparing to publish the 2425 ASB Participation Report and share key insights with schools. During the summer, we'll launch a follow-up process to help schools address participation gaps and strengthen student engagement in extracurricular activities. And then we have our two Goal Four initiatives, and I just wanted to remind people that during our last update, we had both of these, these teams come in and speak, and they're still doing great work out there. The affinity-based support, the team's building a centralized affinity hub and developing the Kent Educators of Color Network site within, within StaffLink to support visibility and engagement. This summer, we'll finalize the affinity group hub while pausing further development of the Kent Educators of Color Network site to better align with teacher availability. In addition to that, they've also done a tremendous amount of great work, and I believe there, that additional work has been outlined in a narrative that we'll follow up with this presentation. Inclusive Spaces, we are in the process of bringing the Inclusive Spaces framework to the Equity Council for approval, with plans on being, plans to bring measuring school readiness for designation, begin measuring school readiness for designation. During the summer, we'll launch a formal designation process and begin supporting schools in implementation. And that is all my updates. Sarah?
Allison, thank you so much. So in conclusion, in the fall, we will bring back to the board the 2425 Strategic Plan Key Performance Indicators that Spencer mentioned, which are measures that are embedded in our strategic plan. Within that, you're going to hear from the team on how our district has been doing. And we're really just excited to present you those results. We're also going to continue to bring you major status changes in all of our priority initiatives, so you continue to stay informed as we launch Year Three of our Year Five of our strategic plan. So with that, I would love to open up the floor to the board for questions.
All right, so you have to deal with the fact that I came from a prior generation. So recognizing that, I want to, the slide 10. All right, implementation of learning walk cohorts, all right? Okay, and obviously, part of the target here is how students experience instruction. Now, I don't think school has changed that much since I was in the classroom. You don't get modeled students in every row. So the, the question I've got is given, well, first of all, learning barriers have always existed, and, and each kid carries their own particular burden in that particular circumstance. But I'm wondering in, in attempting to measure student experiencing instruction, whether, first of all, they're accurately articulating what they're undergoing, and does in fact the measurement of their growth reflect what they're saying?
So can you say what the question is, please, again?
Well, it, all right, it, one of, one of the goals in these walkthroughs is skills for observing how students One of the goals in these walkthroughs is skills for observing how students experience instruction. And what I'm asking is, kids are supposed, you're asking kids to articulate, did they understand, can they, you know? But when you actually go to test them, is that reflective of what they've been saying?
May I step in here for just a second?
I think what this is saying here, Director Clark, is that the teaching is to the teacher to get them to how to draw that out of students, not necessarily that what they're doing, how is that being observed? So as a teacher, I want to make sure that I'm observing my classroom and being able to get that information. So it's teaching the teacher how to best do that. Am I reading that statement correctly?
Thank you, President Margell. You are on the right track. I'm going to add to that and say this is about the skills of the instructional leader. This is about not the skills specific to the students as a goal of these learning walks, but how are leaders sharpening their skills around how to observe students experiencing instruction? So an example is, they pull out the 5D Center for Educational Leadership Framework for instruction, and one section is around student engagement. You will have leaders spending time together saying, "What would be the look for of high-quality student engagement?" And one example of criteria they would look for is that students are engaging in rigorous learning tasks. And so they will take a look and see, "What are students doing here? Is that aligned to a fourth grade math standard?" And so they're looking, they're sharpening their skills and their lens. So this isn't about the skills of the student in this moment. The idea is that if we sharpen the skill of instructional leaders, knowing how to look at students' experience, they'll give informative targeted feedback to teaching staff. And as a result, students will have increased outcomes. So when you see skills there, it's the goal of sharpening the skills of leaders. This is about the leadership work. It's not the goal to, these learning walks are not the goals of sharpening the teachers in that moment. It's for the leaders.
Okay.
Director Gregory, did you have any questions?
So I have a question. Several board meetings ago, I talked about, is there a succession planning? So are we using these metrics, and is that a part of the plan as we go forward, to look at these as succession planning? So we should be, I know we already have that plan in place. I've seen part of it. But I'm saying, are we using this data also to help us kind of move people around, right? To see how they're, like, if something comes out of this, are we saying, "Hey, you need more training in this"? Are we uncovering things that we also need to expand on? Is that coming out of that? Or are we really looking at building their skills around this?
So the metrics that you see here is the qualitative feedback from the participants about their learning experience and how that helps them.
Yes.
We have our executives leaders in these spaces.
Yes.
And collectively, they're coming together to say, "What will this work look like to continue next year?" And so I think the plan or the progression plan that you ask about would be, will we really notice that, I'm making this up, okay? They may say something like, "Will we really notice that when leaders come together and they see a common pattern around student engagement, and the student tasks might not be, you know, at standard rigor? If that's a pattern they identified, then that's where they may want to consider going deeper for that sustainability plan that they are actively planning now." And that is something that our team came together and discussed last week and said, you know, starting with the principal supervisors, that they are going to spend some time thinking about how to further the work. So it wouldn't be a repeat of this.
Right.
But if you're seeing that data and that's something that is interesting, that you would want to learn more about in the following year, is the learning impactful? Is the learning going to connect to more equitable outcomes? That's certainly a question that we can ask.
If I may, and I also like to add, first of all, great question in the succession planning, because what I also hear is, how will we use the data for future, you know, learning walks? And I think about as we hire new leaders in our buildings, what do we currently have that will help them with, how did children get engaged in this area? Was it the questioning strategies that they use, where it may have been higher level? Was it, you know, anything and everything, but what was consistent in there? So I appreciate the question. I think we will calibrate that data and making sure our new leaders are talking about those strategies and implementing them.
May I follow up on the, do you mind? Okay. Let's see if I can formulate this in the coherent question. We can make goals about what we're doing, right? Like, using our partnership to say that we want to have goals around the rigor of the teaching or how we coach our teachers to give that rigor. But in the end, doesn't it all come down to ensure all students meet grade level state standards in English, Language Arts, and Mathematics? And so in the end, when do we come back? And I think, I feel like I've been asking this for a while, right? And I know that we have set up kind of the, you can't build anything unless you have a strong foundation. I absolutely get that. But there comes a point when we have to say, "But all of these things that we're doing, we do them to get this."
Yep.
When do we circle back and say, "Wow, look at all we've done, and it got us here. Let's keep doing it and doing it even better." Or, "Wow, we've done all of this, and we're still not meeting the mark. And when do we, do we change this? Did we not go with fidelity? Did we, like, all, when does that come?" And to be so blunt, some of our test scores don't look great. And that is a very specific goal, is that we want to have all of our students meeting it, and we don't even have 50% in some of our categories. What does that look like? Can you walk me through that path?
I can try my best.
Okay. It's a really big question, and I know that we're not the only district struggling with this.
Yes, and if I had a magic wand, I would say, "This works like this, and that's why we're doing it, and look at the amazing results." I do want to recognize the increase of the proficiency gaps that we've increased post-pandemic. Our students did not experience the foundational skills in the classroom in person in the ways that students that did not, the way that students did get that foundational learning and those skills. And then we can talk about all the social, emotional, mental health impacts as a result of the pandemic. But specific to KSD, one of the commitments aligned to goal one is high-quality instruction. And so thank you for naming that, you understand that that is the base and that's the foundation. But how do you apply that specifically to improve math instruction, literacy instruction? And so what I want to name is, in this work, it's, "How does a leader go through and give informal feedback and go through a feedback cycle as it relates to the best practices of the science of reading? How does a school leader or teaching and learning leaders improve math instruction so students will be more engaged, which is initiative that we are launching into for next school year around building thinking classrooms? And that is getting students into small groups, it's reconfiguring what the classroom might look like, so that students will be more engaged and all participate in math and have that math discourse. And then leaders who have focused on this and they've learned around it will be able to say, "I saw you doing this around your math instruction with building thinking classrooms. As a result, I saw students participating in ways I haven't seen you do in the, I haven't seen happen in this classroom before." And so it's taking those foundational skills for instructional leaders to give that feedback, but apply it to those content areas. We are going to start launching more increasingly Project Lead the Way, science instruction, hands-on science instruction. That, too, will apply for leaders being in the classroom, knowing what the look fours are for the best practices of implementing, and knowing how to give targeted feedback. So it's applying that, those foundational instructional leadership skills to those different content areas and those priority initiatives around science instruction best practices, around math instruction best practices. So that's the whole, the idea, and not saying that this thing alone is going to fix test scores, but we have to start somewhere. And the instructional leadership work is the first step and the base of our approach to the high-quality instruction commitment aligned to goal one. But we are not ignoring that data. We are, it is our urgency. And then start talking about the gaps by race and ethnicity, students in programs such as MLE services and special education. We're absolutely paying attention to that and the widening gaps.
If I could add a little bit on the broader context, because I know you asked it really for anything, right? You gave an example of a more narrow context, but I think this is really around our KPIs, right? In a sense, for, in any industry, in any, we happen to be in a K-12 system in a school district. But this is true for any organization. You have, what I look at is, it's really a matter of front end, what we call front-end analysis, right? You're saying, "Okay, what result would I like to achieve? What is the organizational result that we want? What are valuable produced work outputs that are going to help me represent that? And then what behavior do we engage in? What activities do we do that are going to produce those results that, and you work your way backwards?" So I think what we have are very clear ways of measuring those outcomes, right? Like, we want this standard around student achievement. We want a litany of different things. If you look at our performance indicators, they outline all the things that we've established are ways we would measure success in our strategic plan. So I think the first portion I would answer to President Margell, your question, is, we do that regularly. We have publicly out there, here's our strategic plan data dashboard, here are the measures and the targets that we are holding ourselves accountable to. The strategy by which we engage in trying to move those indicators and those measurements closer to our intended target, that's what's changing. Some of these are these priority initiatives here. And if we're finding that we're stagnating, then we start asking questions of why, just as we would in any industry. Hey, our sales aren't achieving the result we'd like, right? Or our safety metrics aren't hitting where we want them to be. Then you start saying, "Okay, obviously, doing the same exact things we've been doing aren't going to, or don't seem to be achieving those results. What are we going to change?" We can't guarantee that that change is going to affect necessarily that result, especially in a non-controlled environment, right? This isn't a scientific experiment where we can control those variables. So what you see as a commitment from us is, there are two sets of things we can do. One is, we can engage in strategies that we know have a basis and foundation that has increased likelihood of moving that metric to where we'd like it to be. The other thing we can do is, we can look at the degree of fidelity by which we implement that. And so what you're seeing tonight and throughout the course of the year is, did we uphold the standard of fidelity for the priority initiatives we're engaging in, strategies we're engaging in? And then the separate one is, great, if we did, did those, in concert with everything else we're doing, start moving these metrics? And you're going to see, some things are moving, some at slower pace than we would like. Other things where we're making some pretty tangible growth. So I don't know, that helps a little bit, but yes, we are holding ourselves accountable to those, we are publishing those, and we're adjusting our initiatives based on where we need to, from what we see, either traction moving or not.
If I may summarize. If you always do what you've always done, you're always going to get what you always got. So we're trying to do things better and more and looking at the metrics along the way to continue to grow.
Yeah.
I like it. More questions, yes?
Slide 11. And again, I realize we're talking about the leaders, but it does come back to feedback in terms of what students are proceeding. And so I just have trouble divorcing a system with metrics when you're dealing with kids who go through uneven experiences. And far and away, the worst that I can think of is split classrooms in terms of the ability to have instructional time and remediation and confirming where you're at. And because I've always been challenged with that concept of remediation, particularly with the state standards being as standardized and rigid as they are. And so it still comes back to what I was trying to press earlier, and that is, when you're talking to the kids, trying to get exactly what it is that they perceive as their learning experience, is, you talk about street data, and obviously, you're attempting to draw that out. And what you will get is a pattern. I get that part. The question, I guess I have, is, as the teacher is taking the input, use this strategy, is, are we taking into account the status of the kids? I mean, the very first slide you showed me was social, emotional, and so forth. And so I just, you know, I want to see teachers set up for success, obviously, as we all do. But the trap here is, you're really driving data in terms of measurement. And my question is, the accuracy of that data?
I don't know if I can answer that, the accuracy piece, but based on what I heard you say, Director Clark, I do want to name a few things. So the previous slide that we looked at, when it said the skills of student experience, I was addressing that that is about the instructional leader's learning journey to increase their instructional leadership skills. In context to this slide, it does not, what I want to name is, this whole body of work absolutely does not dismiss the student experience. Center for Educational Leadership used student voice years ago to develop what they believe is their equity vision, that students will experience pride and happiness in their learning. That is their core focus, and that came straight from the students' mouths. So that was a body of work that they engaged in. In our launch, our pilot of Panorama, Social, Emotional Learning School Climate Survey, we practiced that with secondary schools this year for fall to spring, and we have some exciting data to look at. Exciting in that it gives us more information about students' learning experiences. One of the questions that it asks is around the rigor of their learning, that there's high expectations in their learning. So we now have information from almost 10,000 students in middle and high school telling us how they feel around the rigor or the level of expectations of the instruction happening in their classroom. And so we don't just sit with that data, what are we going to do about it? If we notice that students who get MLE services or special ed services, because you can look at it by program, that there is a gap there, and we're noticing that there's students who are in certain programs or by race groups have less of a feeling of high expectations of them, or a sense of belonging in the school or the classroom, we got to dig deeper, and that's where street data comes in. And so street data is absolutely a component of all of these goals, but with goal one around this body of work, we will use that data to then dig deeper and do some root cause analysis. If we see that students feel like there's less of a sense of belonging, or there's not high expectations in the classroom, let's tap into that, let's identify that student group, let's see what they're saying, and let's do something about that. That, street data, is an equity transformation cycle. We don't just collect panorama data, we got to do something about it. And we have a commitment in our district to doing system design work around street data.
Thank you. You clarified several things.
We are at 5:45, but I did want to give the opportunity.
We are at 5:45, but I did want to give the opportunity for Director Gregory, if you had another question that you need to answer now, or we can follow up with Cabinet.
I can follow up.
Okay. I too have just a couple of questions I just am interested in.
Yeah.
But I can follow up later.
Okay.
But it is 5:45. We are adjourning this executive session for an hour and a half, 90 minutes. The purpose of the executive session that we will be moving into is to discuss the performance of a public officer or employee. We will return at 7:15. I'd just like to say thank you very much. We know that while the presentation is, a lot of work relates, the work that goes on throughout the year, so thank you very much.
Thank you, team.
We have to wait until seven fifteen.
Good evening, it is now seven fifteen and our executive session is being extended for twenty minutes. We will return at seven thirty five.
We have to wait until seven fifteen.
Good evening. It is now 7:15 and our executive session is being extended for 20 minutes. We will return at 7:35. Thank you.